All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. 1.2 Pledge of Allegiance, I will go ahead and ask Mr. Avila to lead us in the pledge, please. Thank you so much. 1.3 Approval of the Agenda.
So move.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Grande. Vote, please. Ms. Avila, Mr. Avila, sorry. Thank you. Motion passed. 2.0 Special Presentation and Recognitions. 2.1 Resolution Recognition of National Arab American Heritage Month. And I will go ahead and ask Mr. Dr. Wyatt to read it for us, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas the recognition of Arab American Heritage Month began in 1962, when Dr. Alixa Knaff set out to tell the story of Arab American immigrants from Syria and Lebanon, and eventually donated her collection of oral histories and artifacts to the Smithsonian National Museum of American History in 1984. And whereas the Arab American Foundation launched the National American Heritage Month Initiative in 2017, as grassroots effort to gain recognition for the contributions of Arab Americans have made to the United States, and whereas in 2022, President Joe Biden became the first US President to declare April as Arab American Heritage Month, and whereas the Arab American community has made significant contributions to the cultural, economic, and social fabric of the United States, enriching our nation through diverse perspectives, talents, and traditions. And whereas Arab American students, families, and staff are a vital part of San Bernardino Unified School District, contributing to the rich, diverse perspectives of the district community. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino Unified School District joins others around the state and the nation in recognizing April as Arab American Heritage Month, and directs district teachers to promote learning activities that encourage students to reflect on the many notable contributions of American Arab Americans. So move.
Second. Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Mr. Avila. Motion passed. 2.2 Resolution Recognition of Administrative Professionals Week and Day. Mr. Avila, would you read that for us, please?
Yes. Whereas Administrative Professionals Professionals Day is celebrated each April on Wednesday of Administrative Professionals Week, which is the last week of April, and whereas both Administrative Professionals Day and Week are observed annually in workplaces across the country to recognize the importance, contributions of administrative professionals and the essential roles they play in coordinating the office operations of educational institutions and other organizations. And whereas the work administration professionals requires advanced knowledge of expertise in a world, in a wide range of areas, including commissions, computer software, office technology, project managing, organization, customer service, and other vital office management responsibilities. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby recognizes April 20th through 26, 2025, as the Administrative Professionals Week, and April 23rd as the Administrative Professionals Day, and encourages administration throughout the district to recognize the hard work, dedication, and important contributions administrative professionals make each and every day to support the education of our students.
So move. Moved by Ms. Felicia, second by Mr. Santos. Vote, please. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Motion passed. 2.3 Resolution and Recognition of California Adult Education. Mr. Santos.
Whereas adult education in California goes back more than 165 years, beginning with the first recorded adult school sponsored by the San Francisco Board of Education in 1856. And whereas adult education provides educational opportunities, instructional programs, and services to equip adults with the knowledge and skills necessary to participate effectively as citizens, workers, parents, and community members, ensuring that they have education and skills to succeed in competitive economy. And whereas the district's Inland Career Center, Education Center, formerly the San Bernardino Adult School, has served the community for more than 100 years with core mission to provide a bridge to post-secondary education and the labor market through delivery of quality education. And whereas the Inland Career Education Center, also known as ICEC, provides educational support with programs such as high school diplomas, GD preparation, English as a Second Language, citizenship preparation. And whereas ICEC also offers business and computer education classes, popular vocational and career technical education courses such as certified nurse assistant, barber apprentice programs, as well as counseling support. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins the California Council for Adult Education, Inland Career Education Center, and other adult schools throughout California in recognizing April 6th through the 12th, 2025, as California Adult Education Week, and recognizing the valuable role that adult education plays in promoting lifelong learning and improving the economic opportunities for our entire community.
Motion, please. Second. Moved by Ms. Alexander, and second by Mr. Santos. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.4 Resolution and Recognition of School Nutrition Employee Week. Ms. Grande, can you read that for us, please?
Thank you. Whereas April 28th through May 2nd, 2025, is School Nutrition Employee Week, and May 2nd, 2025, is School Lunch Hero Day. And whereas nutritious meals at schools are an essential part of every student's school day. And whereas the staff of the Nutrition Services Department are committed to providing healthy nutritious meals to the district's children. And whereas the individuals who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. And whereas school nutrition employees are the unsung heroes of education who make sure students have full stomachs and have the fuel they need to concentrate on learning during the school day. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares April 28th through May 2nd, 2025, as School Nutrition Employee Week, and expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends them on their dedication to the children of our community.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Motion carries. 3.0 Public Comments. 3.1 Received Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdictions such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And first up, we have Mr. Terry Boykins.
Good evening, Madam President and School Board members. Terry Boykins, Project Finding Chance. Just wanted to bring a update as to some of the things we have been working on for the last few months and what we're preparing for. First, I'd like to take an opportunity to say thank you to Dr. Rodriguez for meeting with Project Finding Chance's staff that were part of the community award that we were given. And those individuals that work on your school sites are, of course, unable to attend because that's where they are. But she did get a chance to join one of our staff meetings and recognize those individuals. So we definitely appreciate you taking the time out to acknowledge our staff, Project Finding Chance. Also, some of you may have recognized the fact that recently we have been thrown into the national spotlight with PBS. And that coverage on San Bernardino and what we were doing created a significant amount of national attention to the point where the phones did not stop ringing. The support from around the country about San Bernardino, people did not know San Bernardino had youth like that because of all the negativity that occurs. And it continues to this day from around the United States. It's kind of humbling to experience, but we are receiving support, donations, accolades, invitations around the United States from individuals that we do not know and they've not heard of us. Only the thing they've heard of is the negativity of San Bernardino. And having the opportunity to watch that PBS special have given some of the exposures to these scholars that they truly deserve and need with regards to what they're doing after school. So just wanted to give you a report on that particular perspective. The other part is, we once again, for July, which a lot of times, parents, caregivers, and students are looking for something to do that's off the streets and out of the way to keep them busy. Project Finding Chance will collaborate with a number of organizations again this year. In the month of July, we have a space for about 100 youth that will be able to get services from STEM, to, of course, boxing fitness will be a part of that, arts enrichment, literary arts as well. We're looking forward to having a very exciting time. And I think that one of the areas that we've been able to really get some feedback is being out on your school campuses. We were at the literacy event not too long ago at San G. We'll be at a number of career events coming up, I think, from April through May, meeting with parents and caregivers and youth, sharing with them what we do at Project Finding Chance. And I can tell you, parents are engaged. Some of them share some of the concerns they have with regards to the behaviors of their kids and is there a place that they can go and get help as a resource? And we want to continue being that resource in the community. What we will do is, within the next 30 to 60 days, we'll let everyone know who our collaborative partners are going to be, what we're planning to do. And those spots, those 100 spots for those youth will be very filled from 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 PM. Every day in July, Project Finding Chance will be available to the parents and the youth in this community. Lot of excitement, lot of athletes that are accomplishing. We also have San Bernardino City Unified School District alumni who are part of our competition team. They had advanced to the Golden Gloves, which they will go back and get ready for the state finals. That's exciting to be able to see that that particular legacy and that alumni, those individuals that are coming back, making a difference, not only in their athletic proudness, but these are athletes that are accomplishing at the highest level in amateur boxing that you can get to, that are coming back and making a difference on those young kids in elementary school, middle school, and even influencing their peers in high school to do the right things and be focused. And so that's what we're going to be doing coming up in July. We've had a great spring break. It's been busy. But I'm very much looking forward to what we're going to do this summer. It's going to be pretty spectacular, as well as with the national attention. I think we're going to be bringing some more cameras. PBS is asked to come back and do another special on us, which I'm really looking forward to. It will keep the board abreast as to what that will entail. And so I want to say thank you for the support. As always, I've talked to Superintendent Ariano. Keep us accountable. That's what we do, and that's what we're going to continue to do in this community. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming down and sharing that information with us. And congratulations to you and your team over there. Next up, we have Emil Ortiz. Oh, sorry, Emily. I apologize for that.
Good afternoon, Board. Again, my name is Emily Ortiz. A few of you know me. I'm here to give a little speech on an issue. Let me put my glasses on. Since approximately 2021, I have experienced verbal assaults from parents, administrators, and colleagues, leading to a hostile work environment. Despite reporting this issue to those I thought could address it, the problem persists. I have tried to resolve it through the proper channels, but have not achieved any success. I'm aware there are others that are facing similar challenges. I'm here to respectfully request transparency and accountability from the district and the board regarding complaints submitted to affirmative action. It is crucial that we have clear data on the number of cases handled each month, timeline of cases being closed, and the process for holding affirmative action department accountable for these cases and how they're handling them. In instances when an employee feels that case was not handled justly, it is imperative that there be a fair and partial avenue for them to seek resolution. Currently, it appears that there is no one advocating for the interest of classified employees. The top officials within the department seem to prioritize their own interests and relationship over those of the employees. I personally experienced a lengthy process with my complaint taking 19 months only to be informed that there was not evidence, not sufficient evidence, even though I submitted evidence. I also feel nepotism played a role in the outcome of my complaint. The lack of closure is unacceptable and highlights the need for a more robust accountability system with affirmative action. The district investigations have shown the district investigation has shown that the accusation is unfounded. I presented evidence, including documents and screenshots of the individual's own words. There was a previous complaint a few months ago accusing the same person of a similar behavior towards another colleague, indicating a pattern. My intention is not to contest the conclusion, but to urge for more improvement and accountability. It is crucial that employees experiencing harassment and defamation are not overlooked and made to feel victimized when the process is closed. I'm requesting that the district consider devising a safety plan specifically tailored to ensure a secure environment for our employees, particularly classified. Conduct a survey to gauge how many employees have raised concerns through affirmative action and felt that their voices were ignored with issues being swept under the rug. Today, I can only speak from my personal experience. And honestly, many do not report because they don't trust the system or those overseeing the system. I have dedicated 21 years of my career to working in the district. And until five years ago, I believed that was the ideal workplace. Just to find out that, for the last five years, it hasn't been. Lastly, I want to announce that I will be submitting a resignation letter to the HR department in a few days. Despite this, I'm not leaving here feeling disheartened, angry, or upset. I'm grateful for the opportunity to work alongside many talented colleagues. And I'm excited about the prospect of exploring new opportunities, achieving success in a different environment. But I do urge the board to look into how affirmative action handles complaints. How many people in this district filed one to have the same thing be told, "Not enough evidence"? I think repeated behavior should be taken into account, even if five repeated behaviors did not find enough evidence on the same person. How many people are having the same person complained on and being told, "Not enough evidence"? As far as, there's nothing that district does for employees in working with parents who yell at them, when administrators call upsetting, yell at clerks. There's nothing that classified employees can go to address these issues. No one is holding anyone accountable. And yes, this creates a hostile work environment for clerical staff out there, classified staff. And it's not being addressed. Classified people are scared to come talk. They're scared to put their name out there, their faces. So before I leave, I want to urge to look into this and maybe fixing it, maybe hold affirmative action accountable. How many cases did you get this month? How many got closed? How many were closed for what reasons? No one knows. Do a survey. Find out how many people have put a complaint and nothing was done. And why wasn't it? And how can we fix this for the classified employees who are going to continue to stay here and hopefully prosper? And I thank you all, and I thank everyone. And my 21 years have been. I've met some great colleagues. I've made some great friends. I have wonderful memories. But I will be moving on. So I want to say thank you to everyone.
Time. Thank you so much, Ms. Grande.
Thank you, Emily. I remember very well, I think it was your first week at Anderson School, correct? And I was passing out invitations to my backyard wedding. And I wasn't very popular at that time, you know? People thought I had a lot of nerve inviting strangers, but I was just being me. And I remember I gave you an invitation and you came to my wedding with your little girl.
It was a wonderful wedding.
I remember the black and white dress you wore. Had polka dots? Yeah, I still remember. Thank you, and I wish you well very much, so.
Thank you.
4.0 Public Hearings. 4.1 Initial Contract Proposal Reopener Article 11 Wages and Article 7 Unit Members Rights from Communication Workers of America. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any public comments? Yes, there are. You, Ms. Teresa Hunts?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, staff and honorable board. I'm Teresa Hunter with CWA Local 9588, representing the guest teachers in San Bernardino City Unified School District. I'm here in support of our initial contract proposal and our reopener. It's actually our reopener, our annual reopener for wages in one article, which is unit members' rights. So I'm just here this evening and to greet all the board members. It's been a little while. And here to support that item.
Thank you so much for coming down. And there's no other public comments, right? Okay, this public hearing is now closed. Be it resolved, the Board of Education receives the initial contract proposal reopener Article 11 Wages and Article 7 Unit Members Rights from the Communication Workers of America, CWA. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, please. Motion carries. 5.0 Close Session. 5.1 Close Session Public Comments. Do we have any?
We do not.
All right. 5.2 Close Session Agenda. We will adjourn. I think we go, we have a quorum, so I'm going to go ahead and get us started. We're at 6.0 Action Reported from Close Session. 6.1 Approval of Elementary School Principal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment. No. Sorry about that. This part always confuses me. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of following employee, Tyler Shook, Elementary School Vice Principal, school site effective date, work, year, and salary to be determined.
Move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Motion carries. Mr. Dr. Funchess?
Board, I do have the honor of, once again, presenting to you another excellent vice principal candidate to join our administrative ranks. Another grow our own. Mr. Tyler Shook has been with us since 2005 as a teacher at Vermont to 2019. Also, a bilingual program facilitator, now program facilitator at Davidson Elementary. Mr. Shook is very knowledgeable and experienced and has a strong background in bilingual education. He's fluent in Spanish, like myself. And he also has, he's very skilled in communicating with families. But another thing that stands out about Mr. Shook is his ability to work well with young people and our families and staff, and very, very adept at technology integration innovation. I welcome to you, Board, tonight, Mr. Tyler Shook for Muscoi Elementary.
Esteemed Board, Presidents of IOS and Cabinet, I sincerely thank you for this opportunity to increase my role in service to our community. I've worked at San Bernardino Schools for over 20 years, and I am grateful for the possibilities for the future. As I begin this new position, I humbly ask for your words of wisdom, constructive criticism, and prayers. As with any work that is truly meaningful, there will be great effort required. I'm wholeheartedly focused on the very best outcomes for our scholars. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and once again, congratulations. All right. 6.2 Expulsion of Students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings of facts and recommendations and orders the expulsion of the following students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Santos. Vote, please. It's been moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Santos. Vote, please. Motion passed. 6.3 Petition to Expunge/Rescind Ceiling of Record or Modify Youth Court Expulsion. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion passed. 6.4 Lift/Readmit of Expulsion of Students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Move.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Tillman. Vote, please. Dr. Wyatt? Motion passes. 6.5 Other Closed Session Action. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of changes to suspend without pay for three days the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district HR class 20-24-25-3-ER.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Medina and second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Motion passes. 7.0 Student Board Members Reports and Comments. 7.1 Mr. Avala.
Hello, my name is Wilber Favila, and I attend Indian Springs High School, and I'm in the 12th grade. And for my reports, other than just one thing, which is that I was there, I was attending and participating on helping the Anderson Olympics hosted at Indian Springs, where a bunch of students from, that are special ed from all different high schools around the district came and enjoyed themselves and had fun. And other than that, I have nothing else to report because it's a spring break and also... But the only other thing is that EXL has been active and and we have planned a lot of trips to go to. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Avala, and I just want to say thank you for being here today as it is, you know, part of your spring break. So thank you. We appreciate having you here. 8.0 Administrative Reports and Presentations. 8.1 Administrative Presentation Recruitment and Retention Systems. And I'll go ahead and pass it on to Dr. Funchess.
Thank you, President Savios. Before we jump into our presentation tonight, I wanted to thank the entire HR team for, or most of the HR managers for being here tonight. And they work so well together and with our other divisions and departments. So wanted to take a moment to thank you for the work that you do. And board, we're excited to present to you tonight our HR systems. As you know, at the core of every successful organization, our strong human resources systems that attract talent, nurture their growth, and ensure long-term retention. And board, your leadership over the years has empowered our HR division to develop award-winning Grow Our Own Systems, demonstration teacher program, and an onboarding program as well. And tonight, our HR team will provide an overview of our intentional systems for attracting and diversifying talent and the pathways from SBCUSD student to classified employee to guest teacher and ultimately classroom teacher. And we will also highlight our personalized coaching and mentoring for educators, which ensures their success. And finally, board, we'll introduce our district's new customer experience systems launched this school year to enhance excellence in how we engage with our community. And what you have in front of you, you have the presentation, and you also have a handout underneath that presentation that has more detailed data on our metrics and what we've done up to this point this year. So with that, I have the pleasure of introducing to you Mrs. Alexis Jinks, our Director of Human Resources Classified, Dr. Robert Morales, our Director of Human Resources Certificated, and Mrs. Mary Pierce, our Director of Employee Development. Turning it over to the team. Thank you very much. Next slide, please.
Good evening, board. Alexis Jinks, I'm the Director of Human Resources Classified. I'm very excited to be here this evening to speak with you about the work that our team in the Human Resources Classified Department is responsible for in support of attracting and retaining talent within the district from high school to career. This topic is one that resonates with me. As I started my career in the district in 1999 as a college student intern, as a graduate from San Bernardino High School. I am grateful that our district's board continues to support high school career pathway programs and other partnerships. I'm also very, very grateful to have the opportunity to work with an amazing team of individuals who work hard to hire our employees. Those being our high school student workers, our college student interns, our apprentices, our classified substitutes, and then those employees who are entering and beginning their career as classified employees in the district. Next slide. After graduation, some of our high school students who have participated in pathway programs, they have opportunities to become district college student interns. Currently, as you will see in your pamphlet, our district employs approximately 460 student interns. And while they are attending college or university full-time, they are able to work here and to gain and learn practical experience that builds their skills to prepare them for their work that is in alignment with their career goals. The pathway of work experience sometimes leads them to apply for classified positions within the district. And then they begin their work with us as classified substitutes. Classified substitute opportunities also may lead to permanent positions within the district. As you will see in the pamphlet that we provided to you, the Human Resources Classified Team this year to date has hired 113 employees from substitutes, classified substitutes, into permanent classified positions. The experience that these employees are gaining as classified substitutes and/or even student interns is invaluable, and it prepares them to be able to continue their careers in the district by transitioning to roles such as guest teachers and/or working in other certificated capacities in the districts that allow them to continue supporting our district's instructional and educational goals. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Robert Morales.
Ms. Jinks, good evening, board and cabinet. My name is Robert Morales. I'm the proud director of Human Resources Certificated. And just want to say thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening. So our goal, as Ms. Jinks has already mentioned, is to attract and hire the best educators and employees for our students. I think we can all agree with that. Our efforts in doing so include an annual recruitment fair, which we just held on March 1st, and we attracted 947 visitors on the day. It was a very fruitful day for us. And this was a fair that was designed for certificated candidates seeking employment within our district. It's the advertisement and marketing of this event and the San Bernardino City Unified School District that are foundational to our efforts and include, which do include social media, electronic billboards, postcards, various publications, and frequent visits to university programs, as well as partnerships with local universities. I'm honored to say that we have hired 283 new certificated employees thus far. It is also a treat for me to share that of these 283 new employees, 73 of them are graduates of our very own high schools. And since Ms. Jinks has already mentioned her high school, I want to highlight San Gregorio High School because you see in your information there that there are 19 graduates of San Gregorio High School, my alma mater, which I'm very proud to say are employees with us today. Next slide, please. These endeavors are made possible by an excellent team of classified and certificated staff, including our very own site leaders, who serve as recruitment ambassadors. To attract the best, we want to make sure that we are represented by the best. Furthermore, we do partner with Cal State San Bernardino and their Project Impact, which is designed to bring men of color into the field of education. And also UC Riverside's Teacher Residency Program, which is designed to develop teachers in the field of STEM, SPED, and dual language. Additionally, we currently employ 1,100 guest teachers. Our guest teachers play an integral part in the daily functions of our schools. Guest teaching is one pathway to a position as a certificated teacher within our district. This year, we have hired 120 of our guest teachers into full-time certificated teaching positions. Very proud to say that as well. Student teaching is another pathway that our potential candidates can pursue with San Bernardino City Unified School District. This year, we had the privilege of hiring 78 candidates who completed student teaching within our district. Thank you for that time, and I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Pierce.
I'll jump in right here. Next slide, please, before Mrs. Pierce. And so, board, you heard Dr. Morales talk about a couple of programs, UC Riverside and Project Impact at Cal State San Bernardino. And a few weeks ago, I presented some information with Cal State. I also have provided some information in the Friday update around male and female individuals in our, or employees in our district. And so, in alignment with our TIP policy, we are committed to attracting and retaining a diverse workforce reflective of our student population. And more specifically, SBCUSD has developed intentional recruitment strategies to attract and hire educators and administrators of color. Dr. Morales talked about Project Impact, the UCR Teacher Residency Program, which is new going into the 25, 26 school year with a focus on STEAM and dual language, but also educators of color as well. And then our Riverside County Office of Education Admin Program, which focuses on diversity in administration. And if you look at the data up there, the data shows where we are right now in regards to race, ethnicity, and male, female in our certificated workforce, the management and non-management. But our goal, board, is to continue to build a workforce reflective of our student population and to bring more males into the teaching profession over time. So that's where we are now, and as we continue to track this data with our systems, I'm sure the numbers where they need to be increased will be increased. Next slide, please. Turn it over to Mrs. Mary Pierce.
Good evening, board. Mary Pierce, Director of Employee Development. And I want to thank you all for continued funding of several innovative programs that help us support and retain our employees by creating some customized, personalized programs and these systems that we're talking about with you this evening. I want to thank you for that funding. And my colleagues here bring in such an incredible diverse pool of talented people with all these various recruitment systems. My team gets the opportunity to develop their skills and knowledge, basically unwrap the gifts that they bring to us when they come here. And we want to ensure their success, and we want to make sure that they serve our scholars with the excellence that they deserve. So to add to what Dr. Morales shared, employee development has had the opportunity to build a really, a truly exceptional student teacher mentor program. This has become a model for other districts. Our system has been highlighted in CTA Educator Magazine and the Sun News and received an Outstanding Partner Award from Cal State San Bernardino. This is one of our primary pathways into the teaching career in San Bernardino City Unified School District. We've worked together with Dr. Morales to ensure we retain these excellent young people. They come to us early in their careers. They're still in college, making a commitment to our scholars here in the district, and so we want to keep them. So we hire actually about 50% of the student teachers who come here, which is higher than the national average, which is only about 30 or 40%. Next slide, please, David. Now, once we hire these employees, it's our responsibility to make sure they have what they need to be successful. Through our onboarding system, we conduct orientations that are customized, whether you're classified, certificated, management. And we customize that, but we also, across the board, want to share the district's vision, our mission. Help people get to know their colleagues, help them to begin to build relationships with others, to be a truly great team. We provide individualized coaching, which includes two-year teacher induction and two-year administrator credentialing programs to ensure that we have fully credentialed educators. As a result, 100% of our induction program participants clear their credentials with us. This year alone, we are supporting 677 certificated probationary employees, and 214 of them are completing the two-year period and will be granted permanent status. We also train experienced classified employees to provide mentorship to new classified employees and ongoing professional development to all educators and administrators district-wide. These systems not only help us retain new employees, but also increase the level of engagement and retention of our high-performing and experienced employees. They expand and deepen their knowledge by sharing their expertise with those who are new, and that contributes to the greater development of the profession as a whole. And all of these are key components in moving our district toward becoming a serious institution of academic learning. Next slide, please. Focusing on recruiting from our own former students, San G included, and growing employees into teaching positions from within the organization is one powerful way to do this work. Through the Classified Employee Grant we facilitate, it's part of the county's HR Special Projects Consortium, we have been able to create the opportunity for 57 classified employees who are aspiring to become teachers to attend school. In your pamphlet, it notes 49. That's this year alone. So the numbers there are about what we've done this year, but we have done 57 overall. This grant includes tuition, housing, books, other expenses. And as of today, 31 of our own classified employees are enrolled in college pursuing their credentials. We've already hired 28 into the teaching profession, and eight more are ready to be hired for next year. In a moment, we will hear from two of them. So what's the impact of creating all this, this Grow Our Own educator pathway with its attendant coaching and professional learning? We wanted you to hear the voices of a couple of our brand-new teachers. Rosibel Gutierrez, who was a 2005 graduate of a Royal Valley High School and served previously as a classified instructional assistant at both Wilson and Brown Elementary Schools before becoming a guest teacher, and now serves as a special education teacher at Brown Elementary School. She is not here this evening, but we're going to hear from her via video. And Lily Torres, a 2002 graduate of San G High School, who served previously as an instructional aide at multiple schools and then an office assistant health aide at Highland Pacific Elementary School before becoming a guest teacher, and now serves as a first-grade teacher from Belvedere. She's actually here this evening along with her principal, Silvete Deliano. She's actually here this evening along with her principal, Silvete Deliano, and vice-principal, Treg Painter. Let's give her a round of applause, and her husband. Let's not leave him out. He's here tonight, too. So we'd like to hear from them. We're not going to ask her to speak. We actually recorded her, so you could hear from her. So if we could go ahead and play the video, David. Thank you.
What led me to work in this district is I was actually a student with San Bernardino City Unified. I literally could think of many teachers that inspired me to want to become a teacher.
I grew up in San Bernardino. I graduated from Royal Valley High School, and the teachers made a really big impact in my life growing up. So I wanted to give back to my community, and that is why I decided to work to the San Bernardino School District.
Our district helped pave the way for me to find programs that they had partnerships with. Working as a classified employee, I also, again, had the support system from the school, from the support staff, the admin, and making a way for me to take classes in order to reach my goals.
The district helped me become a guest teacher by also providing training for me. They gave us training on PBIS expectations, on classroom management, and that gave me the opportunity to become a better guest teacher.
The grant program that was provided for classified employees, it really was a game changer for me. It really helped ease my mind. Financially, it supported my family through, you know, mommy having to go back to school.
The classified grant program helped me become a teacher by helping me pay for my tuition, which helped me accomplish my goal of becoming a special education teacher.
So being in the TIP program, I have definitely learned so much. Our district, you know, has provided me with a coach that takes the time to teach me, you know, the learning intentions, what I need to do to become a successful teacher in our district, and just how to mold and shape our students, what is the best outcomes for them. And I'm just, I'm really proud to be in this program.
The onboarding program is helping me now as a teacher. They're providing weekly coaching. They're providing also the opportunity for me to see other classrooms, as well as giving me the opportunity to go to trainings, new hire trainings and other trainings that they offer as well to help me grow as a special education teacher.
I want to thank you again, Board, for allowing us to share some of the ways that we work to ensure the success of our new employees in producing excellence to serve our scholars. And I want to thank you again, Ms. Torres and Ms. Deliano for being here tonight. Thank you. Dr. Funches is going to wrap us up now.
And Board, as we wrap up tonight, those are just some of the testimonials about our onboarding and how we treat our people, how we value them. So it's located on the presentation. Throughout those sentences, you'll see support, being mindful of how people feel, how they're treated. So that's just something that we wanted to share with you. Next slide, please. And then finally, Board, what you've heard and what you've seen tonight are the results of our focus on attracting and retaining a diverse workforce. And we have the same sense of purpose on how we attract and retain our families in the district. And Board, you've requested that customer service be a central priority in our Vision 2030. You've had extensive conversations with our superintendent about that. And our customer experience training, our new customer experience training for SBCUSD front office staff and administrators is designed to improve interactions and service quality throughout the district in three service areas, or three key areas. Number one, standards for empathy, such as being patient and communicating clearly, actively listening to our parent concerns, which you know is important. Number two, standards for the environment, greeting customers promptly, meaning our family members, and making eye contact, maintaining neat and professional workspaces. And then finally, standards for interaction, showing genuine concern and care for our customers or our family, and using appropriate tone of voice to convey care. So our goal, Board, as you've directed us, is to increase our customer experience outcomes by fostering respect, professionalism, and empathy in all interactions with our community. And so your Human Resources Division is building and retaining an empowered workforce under your leadership for the San Bernardino City Unified School District community. Thank you very much. Next slide, please. That is it.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you. Yes. Give him a hand, and I have Ms. Medina.
Wow, this is amazing. Thank you so much for bringing the presentation to all of you and Dr. Funches, who has been doing a lot of work to make sure we diversify as well and retain, diversify. I have a couple of questions because those numbers flew by really quick, and I was trying to jot them down. So currently, I don't know if it was mentioned, I believe it's on the third page, where it shows from high school to career and the different pathways, which is the high school pathways, the student interns. So do we have a number of students that are currently in pathways right now? Was it mentioned? I'm sorry. I know there was numbers mentioned in the beginning.
No, thank you for your question. No, the numbers were not mentioned for the number of students in high school pathways. However, that is something that we could get for you and provide to Dr. Funches for Friday update.
Okay. And then especially since we're talking about how do we promote with the Educators of Tomorrow, and do you have that number maybe on with how many students are currently in that pathway?
Right now, Ms. Medina, we're compiling that information for the next presentation with Ed Services. So we'll have that. Well, we do have that information, just not right in front of us.
Bringing you the CTE pathway presentation at the next boardroom, so we'll get all that for you.
But I think it was also mentioned student intern number. I know that page has several numbers in there.
Yes, the number for student interns is approximately 460 this year.
460. And then we had classified, I think it says 113, but is that separate from the interns? Is that?
So the 113 is specifically the number of classified substitutes that the team has hired this year that have gone into permanent positions.
Oh, into permanent, okay. And then we had permanent classified employees. Is that, was that the 113? Maybe that's where I was trying to?
The 113, they are in permanent classified positions now. They were classified subs, and then we hired them, so that's a total number.
Okay, great. And then the pathways, I think it's the recruitment page. Let me see here. I heard that you, so we are currently working with Project Impact? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, great. And so with that Project Impact, I know they help out with tuition. Is that something that, are we, I'm sure it takes a while to try to recruit and advocate and send some of our classified to the program. So what is the plan for right now?
We are, thank you for the question. We are in infancy of our development with the partnership. So as we flesh out those details, we'll make sure we get that information to you.
Yeah, but it's a start, which is awesome. I appreciate that. And then going to where we have the educator Lily. Thank you so much for joining us here, as well as Rosibel Gutierrez, who spoke, which are amazing testimonies on how we help our classified employees here. So I wanted to find out, the grant program, what does that look like? And is this open to all classified, or is there like an application process for them to be considered into going into teaching? Is this for the teaching aspect of it, right?
Yes, it's specifically for classified employees who, or former classified employees. So they could be like sub, a sub-teacher right now, but they had been a classified employee who want to become teachers, and they have to be enrolled in school. And then they bring us all that information, and they would reach out to my department, my office, for all of that information. We have anything that they want to know about it. So feel free to reach out to Employee Development. Emma in my office is an expert, and she can help with that. They provide up to $4,320 per fiscal year, and it can cover tuition, books, a living stipend, testing. At some of our colleges, it's enough to cover the entire amount. So it really is a great, and you know, it ends next year, 2026, that grant program. So if people that you know of are, you know, on that path, they're meant to be a teacher, and they just need some help to get there, we're here for them.
Is there a reason why it ends?
I don't, you know, typical grants, right? They have usually a lifespan. It's, again, we're part of a consortium with the county. So any of you who have, you know, can speak with people at the county, we'd love to extend it if there's more funding for it.
So at the county, is it the county board of it?
Yes, and the person Supria Barrows is the person at the county? Oh, I see Dr. Wyatt nodding his head.
Yeah, so how can we help them, you know?
How do we help them keep it going, renew it?
Yeah, renew it. Okay, sounds good. I think those are great responses. Thank you so much. And I look also forward to the next presentation that we do have. And it's like this collaboration between both, and how do we, again, help diversify our district and bring in the best and the brightest. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Ms. Alexander?
Well, first of all, thank you for the excellent presentation. It was extremely thorough and informative as it relates to how we take care of both classified and non-classified. I have a question as it relates to our recruitment. I know a couple of years ago, we had a large percentage of employees that retired, or it was a pretty large number. Can you kind of explain our recruitment efforts, other than what you have here? Like, what are we doing unique? Because what I'm hearing out there is San Bernardino is a place to come teach, come work. So what are we doing? Because we're doing more than what you have here.
Question. Thank you for that question. So I'll attack from the certificated lens. So one of the things that we're doing that's unique is we're actually showing up on the campuses of our local universities and speaking in their classrooms. So not only to those candidates that are approaching the end of their credential programs, as an example, but also the individuals that are just starting, and then getting into the undergrad classes as well, and talking to them about the possibility of going and becoming a teacher, or a counselor, or an SLP, or whatever it might be. So just engaging them early on so that we can try and, hey, come work for the best. That's a bold statement that we make, and we stand by that.
Yes, it's going beyond just San Bernardino, from what I understand. So that's what I was wondering. Are we doing some type of social media outreach as well? Okay.
Yes, absolutely. Through the help with Communications, Mary Rone and her team as well, helping us out with Instagram as an example, Facebook. We had the digital billboards. We blanketed the Inland Empire. We went into our competitors' range, if you will, and we did that with postcards as well.
I think that's excellent, because I know a few years ago, there was this perception that people didn't want to come here to work, and particularly come to our school district, or they wanted to go to surrounding school districts. So excellent job.
What Dr. Morales didn't mention, with the postcards, working with Mary Rone and Communications. So everything we sent out is done at high levels of excellence, right? So the positivity on the postcards, the billboards, but we also sent them out far-reaching. So cities like Redlands, Beaumont, Riverside, wherever, we're sending them out because we want a wide range of candidate perspectives to go after. So I want to thank Dr. Morales and the collaboration with Communications as well.
And I just have one more question, and it's in reference to classified and non-classified. What are we doing in terms of the feedback loop, in terms of retention of employees, and also making sure our employees are satisfied? And if they're not, what are we doing to take care of that?
Thank you for that question. So that's actually a really great question because that's something that we have been exploring as a leadership team with Human Resources. One of the things that we are talking about doing next year is creating some type of feedback type survey for our employees who are leaving the district and/or to try to capture them when we first know that they might be leaving, to maybe kind of get their feedback and perspective. So we are beginning to have discussions about that now as a leadership team. And so I'm excited that we will probably be able to share some news with you for next year specifically to that. But that has been our focus as well. You know, with retaining, sometimes you maybe always don't, but why aren't we? That's important to us. So we're going to be looking into that next year.
Thank you. That's great. And I'm sorry, I have one more question because you sparked it.
Can I add to that? I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Alexander. I just want to add one more thing that we discussed because we haven't examined that well, I think, and we need to work on it. So I appreciate you bringing that up. One of the things we've talked about also is not just an exit interview, which is what everybody does, because the person's already gone. They've already decided. They're moving on. So we've talked about something called keep interviews, which is sort of targeting specific classifications, specific employee groups where we have a high need, and meeting with those employees early on, like, you know, six months into the job, say, and asking them some specific questions about their experience, the support, what is needed to kind of meet needs before they may become an issue and the person wants to leave us. Of course, people leave for many reasons, right? You know, they move to another area or things like that. But those who are here, and we don't want them to leave us for any other reason other than a necessity, right? So I really appreciate that question, and we are, we have been discussing that, looking into how we're going to retain more classified employees. Thank you.
That'd be good. And my last one is in reference to succession planning. So we have a lot of great talent. Some of us have years that are behind us and less years in front of us. What are we doing to address that transition where you're going to lose some employees to retirement, but yet and still they have a lot of great skill sets? And then also making sure that the younger generation is on a pathway to success like the ones that are going to retire out?
I would say that the mentorship programs and the coaching programs that we have creates that legacy, really, because people pass on such a wealth of knowledge that can't, you can't do that just, you know, leaving someone a handbook. You know what I mean? It's something that someone walks alongside you. I mean, you heard Lily talking about her coach over here. That's a real, you know, an experienced person who has expertise in the area, who is able to pass that on to others. And I think that's something that this district really needs to be proud of. We have built excellent programs of mentorship and coaching that ensure that, that things are carried on, that the things that work well are reproduced within that new generation. So thank you for that question. I hope that answers what you're asking.
Just making sure, is that mentorship program something that's available to everybody, or how does an employee find out about it?
Well, currently, we do have a formalized coaching services for all certificated employees and administrators, because especially with those who are clearing their credentials, it's formal, and it's, you know, it's something that we must do. We do have classified mentor also program specifically for those classified employees who touch students, basically, who work at schools. So instructional assistants, custodians, and those classifications have been targeted. So we have mentorship for them as well, and that's who we're serving at this time.
Thank you. And thank you, Lily, for coming, and thank you, Rosibel, for speaking up and sharing your experiences.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Mr. Santos?
Thank you. Just wanted to say thank you for this information and making it digestible for someone who's new like me, and very understandable. And on a side note, I wanted to thank Dr. Morales. I was on his school site council as a parent at Caesar Chavez Middle School, as I point out, Caesar Chavez Middle School, not Chavez, right? And he volunteered me into SPAC and into DAC. And then he encouraged me when I said I wanted to run for school board. So thank you, and here I am. So see, recruiting. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming out and for the presentation. I'll just, I have a couple of questions myself. I'll make them brief, though. I, as the conversation was going, you had brought up the, you know, high-needs areas. What are some of those high-needs areas that we kind of currently have people coming and going from?
All right. Yes, thank you for the question. Specifically for SPED, Special Education, my alma mater, Mott severe, we have our deaf and hard-of-hearing, visual impairment as well. So those are the highest need. We have our uh deaf and hard of hearing, visual impairment as well. So those are the highest need. And then also our dual language positions. We know in our district, half of our schools have dual language on their campuses, so those are specific situations where we want to make sure we fill every single year um based on need. And uh, excuse me, STEM. STEM is the other one, because we know that that is on the rise. And I'm going to say most of our campuses have STEM-related positions to some degree. So we want to make sure that we're recruiting individuals to go into those positions.
Thank you. And then the next question that I had was around the student internships. Can you briefly share with me, um, what are those areas in which students are interning? And so I know, you know, you've said teacher, um, but, but what it, aside from teachers, what else is there out there for students?
Thank you for your question. Uh, so for the college student intern uh program that we have, um, we have our interns in the district that are working in different, in many capacities. Um, a large majority of them uh support through departments, and they are supporting at school sites, um, during tutoring to students uh during school, um, and during the time that they are not in school themselves. Um, we do have some student interns that are also placed in district offices that are um working on office skills and customer service um and things like that. So um, when we place the student interns, or we try to place them, we try to place them in their area of interest, their pathway. Um, so that's kind of generally, you know, a question that comes up. Nine times out of 10, um, they are coming and they want to be teachers. And so, you know, that's great. We'll connect them with other departments or the divisions, um, so they can kind of get hands-on experience. But we do have our student interns serving in many capacities.
Thank you. Thank you for, for that response. And so help me understand a little bit more in terms of, like, how do they get placed? Um, you know, like, uh, at school sites versus department, um, offices? Um, you know, is, is each school site have at least one intern? Like, walk me through a little bit of, of that.
Also a great question. Um, so it happens in, in many ways. Um, and just in full transparency, um, we do not have like an official recruitment uh for student interns, but I am very happy that it happens by word of mouth. Um, and so generally what happens, um, and I will use the example of um secondary ed. Uh, so they have a lot of great partnerships, and so maybe by word of mouth from um Cal State. Um, it may be that a student is interested in work opportunities, and so they will connect with someone, maybe in the secondary ed department. And so there's kind of like a somewhat of an intake where they are asking that person's interest. And so then, you know, once they kind of identify a place where we can place the, the intern or the potential intern, uh, then there is a process that comes through with the paperwork for hire, and then it, you know, gets to HR, and then we place them accordingly. Um, I will primarily say that nine times out of 10, our recruitment efforts are just via word of mouth.
And so if, do we have like a set number um every year that we're saying, okay, we want, we have the ability to, you know, take in X amount of interns this year and next year? And what does that look like?
Within confines of budgetary uh constraints, um, a department's ability or a school site's ability, uh, maybe smaller or larger depending on their budget. Um, so if, you know, school sites have the budget to support student interns, then some might have more than others. Um, departments, if their budgets are larger, some might have more than others. Um, but what we are very, work very well with is if there's a department that can pay for the student interns, then they will help support school sites who in turn may not be able to afford to pay for them.
Got it. Okay. So if, if, say, any of us, you know, new students, um, that were college students that were interested in our district, we would send them to HR?
For now, yes. Yep, we will get them taken care of, um, as far as establishing our int- uh, you know, what their interests um are. Um, but I will say that um next school year, this is going to be something that our HR classified department is going to tackle in a full form. Um, just to kind of provide a little bit more structure to the process, um, so that, you know, the questions that you are asking, it's kind of already spelled out by way of, you know, a flyer or something that we can share with people, um, you know, out and about in the community.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you so much. And um, just one last thing, I, I'm really glad to see that a customer service um project or um initiative or, you know, whatever, whatever we want to call it, I, I'm a huge supporter. I think that sometimes we lose the focus and um, for whatever reason, sometimes, you know, being in education is a, is a tough job, and I think that we need to be able to remind ourselves, and, and that really does need to be a priority, which I'm glad that we're, we're making. So thank you so much um to Dr. Funches and all, all of his team, all of you guys. Thank you so much. And Mr. Tillman?
Very much. Yes, I know over the years I've recommended uh people to become interns, college students, uh, had great success. For instance, a goo- a good example would be in our uh technology department. So I know somebody's majoring in technology, looking for experience, because experience means so much in the field of technology. And while I was at the county, I even had people who were, worked as interns for the school district and were able to attain employment full-time with my department. So it's, it's a great program. It's, it's a win-win because you have some sharp students who can do great work in the district, and at the same time they're learning, they're providing the service also. Um, and I also want to say that, you know, the board over the year has intentionally tried to ensure that um we can create an environment that is conducive to recruiting the best and the brightest. And I, I think sometimes we lose sight of uh advertising some of the greatest things in the district. One of them is retirement. Only 8% of people in the United States uh are working for a organization that has a defined benefit plan, which means that you work for a certain amount of years and you get a retirement for the rest of your life. That's a big deal. And some of our existing employees aren't even aware of how unique that is. I had someone call me a few months ago, say I'm gonna leave the district, start a nonprofit, and I said, well, you realize you have 20 years in the retirement system. You're real close to 60, because ta- ta- and take it from me, if you're 40, 60 gets there real quick. And so you're not, you're going to lose, you're going to lose money by leaving the district at this time. A lot of money. Um, so that's a big deal. I mean, right now, I think the, even in tier two, I think uh PERS and STIRS is what, 2.2% at 62 or something like that? 2.1%? That's a, that's a big deal. Uh, and then the other thing is we pay full benefits. I've been with the board for 30 years. One of the things that we have, the board has um intentionally done is ensure that we can offer those full medical benefits. That's something that needs to be sold out there. We're recruiting people, because there are very few organizations now that pay full benefits, including school districts. A lot of them went down the path of not paying full, and so the cost just keeps increasing yearly for those employees. So it's a big deal that we still offer uh full benefits. And then um, because the district during LCFF times started getting additional money, we're able to ensure that we're some of the highest paid employees in the area. That's a big deal, and that's something we should advertise also. But all in all, you know, it starts at the board, and, and I know we have board members that are committed to ensure that we treat our employees fairly and try to provide a, a environment that's conducive for them to be able to ha- go to work, but also have a home life. That's, that's important to us. That's important to the superintendent. So therefore, that message should be going out throughout the entire district. We have an environment here that is a good place to work, not just for what you can bring uh as a professional, but also have the balance of home life, because we realize that's important. Thank you very much.
Ms. Medina?
I think we have like a little mini commercial from what your little snippet is. So, I mean, if we were just to condense it down and create like a, a virtual video, that's great. Thank you for sharing that, because a lot of families that may be watching or students that may be watching, or even other areas, they're probably looking at what we're doing here and just what you just messaged. Um, and of course, with what, everything that has been said with the presentation, and then what's coming up for the next uh presentation. So it just shows that we have um good programs here.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to go ahead and move on to 9.0, board discussions. Um, and I believe Mr. Uh, Dr. Wyatt will be recusing yourself?
Yeah, yes, Madam President. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, 9.1 and 9.2. Um, I know these are items I brought up in the past, and um, I serve on both uh Board of Directors for 9.1 and 9.2. Therefore, since there is a monetary number attached to this, I will have to recuse and remove myself uh from the discussion and the vote. Thank you.
All righty. Well, thank you so much for that. We'll go ahead and go um to 9.1, which is the first um item on that discussion, Young Visionaries Mayor's Masquerade Ball, 2025, May 16, 2025. Ms. Medina?
Do we ever find out if we've um supported this specific? Because this is a mayor's program. So this is a mayor's masquerade. I know we've, with other districts, we've supported um educational programs or something that says education in it. This one's a mayor's, mayor's ball or masquerade ball. Um, um, and the reason why I'm saying this is that if we have in the past, no, we haven't. Okay, um, I wouldn't necessarily go for a high number, only because this is a mayor's masquerade, if, if the board decides to support it. Um, I, I would um just kind of look at that since it is a mayor's masquerade, not necessarily uh specific to the education portion, so.
Thank you. And um, was that a no? We haven't supported? Oh, okay. Uh, Ms. Alexander?
I haven't supported this event. I thought we did last year.
I don't recall doing it last year. I looked at my list and I didn't see it.
Well, they have, that's what I'm saying. They have like, this is the first mayor's program.
Last year, they did a mayor's gala, because we had our mayor there, but I don't recall doing a sponsorship. You may have bought a ticket, but we didn't do a sponsorship, that I recall.
Thank you for.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we were clear. It says focusing on empowering youth and young adults. I, it doesn't say where the money's going. I know that's what you're asking, Abigail. Um, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure who brought this. Do we have to stick with the categories that are here, or could we at least consider a sponsorship? Or is there an interest to considering we have supported young visionaries in the past?
Repeat that question for me one more time?
Do we have to stick with the three categories that are here, 150, 200 to 3,000, and the different sponsorship levels?
I think we can sponsor whatever we, we want to sponsor.
The only thing on that would be if you went off the sponsorship, you wouldn't probably get the table, I'm guessing, because it's like 5,000, you get a table for eight and things like that, so.
You'd be able to get a thousand dollar worth of tickets at 150 dollars, if that's what you wanted to do.
Is there more conversation?
Are you done with your portion of it?
Yeah, I was actually want to just propose that we sponsor it at $3,000 level, table sponsorship.
Oh, a second. Okay, so let me, before I move on, let me just um get to Mr. Yeah, Tillman.
Yeah, so um, you know, this whole process works best when somebody from the board brings this forward, so you know you're advocating for it. Uh, in terms of young visionary, I'm assuming that the, the checks being made out to young visionaries, um, Ms. Cunningham?
I'm assuming that we do, there's a form we have to fill out, so I'm assuming it goes straight to young visionaries.
That's important. I mean, we got to know that.
Right.
Um, is the funding, the money is going to the or- what organization? And I say that because it qualifies because it says when the organization provides a service that complements or enhances what the district already provides, then you can donate money. And the other, other item is when there is an identifiable secondary benefit to the district, or when the organization provides a service to the district uh could provide but chooses not to, because I know for a fact that uh young visionary complements our district, and they provide services to our students in, in number of different ways. So it'd be easy to um say yes. So as long as this is young visionary and the money's going to that nonprofit, then I support it.
So, and so it sounds like we have a motion from Ms. Alexander for a $3,000 sponsorship, and then a second from Ms. Grande for, for that. So if we have no further discussion, then we can go ahead and move with the vote. Motion carries, and now we're going to move on to 9.2, and this is the San Bernardino Symphony's Annual America, the Beautiful Concert and Fireworks, July 5th, 2025 event. And so again, this was um brought up for discussion. Ms. Medina?
I, I just want to say, um, I appreciate one of the attachments because it actually specifies there. I mean, maybe this is something that we can have for every single one uh of those that are proposed um to sponsor or contribute um that we have something that's similar to what you, I'm not sure who, did you create this or was that the program? See, something like this is, was great, because it kind of highlights exactly who was giving, what's, what's the money going to, uh, what has a program paid for. Um, many years ago, we um during the, some of the consent items, you know, there's a lot of different funds, and sometimes we don't know exactly, okay, how, how many students is deserving, you know, so forth. Now we are actually moving in that direction. I'd like to have something similar to that for um sponsorships as well. And if, if we have a board member that, you know, wants to support a program, maybe either it's our duty or job for us, a board member, to ask these questions and have something like this, or maybe having the organization themselves write up something similar to this. So I do appreciate this, uh, Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
I just don't understand what we're asking for here, though.
It's in the document. So I was going to, I'll make a motion that we uh move the sponsor up to 500 to, 500 tickets, but it's always based on the students wanting to attend. I'm not saying that we buy 500 tickets and someone don't go use. I'm saying we, we buy up to 500 students. So somebody ought to put out that we have this event, and then students can ask for tickets, and we buy tickets up to 500 tickets.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tillman. I don't mean to cut you off, but Ms. Alexander is still speaking.
Oh, sorry.
No, I, I appreciate the clarification, but what I was trying to say is that I thought San Bernardino Symphony provides us with tickets for our students. So that's why I didn't understand what we were actually voting on. Okay, so it's in addition to what they give us.
Okay.
So where do you see the number that you just referenced, Danny?
Look on the document, it says Sam, San Bernardino Symphony, America Beautiful. Oh, yes, in the actual item. Scroll down to the bottom.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's all I needed to.
Okay, so Mr. Tillman now has made a motion to go ahead and sponsor uh 500 tickets based, or up to 500 tickets.
A second.
Uh, but we're not going to go out and buy the tickets. That's going to be based on student interest, so we buy them as they come?
Buy the ticket until we get a count. It says the event is on July the 5th. So we'll get requests from students that want to attend. Once we have a cutoff, then you go out and buy that many tickets and give it to the kids.
Are we in agree, are, are we, no more discussion? Are we okay with that?
Yeah, I, I was more concerned about the logistics.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table from Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander, to uh for, for up to 500 tickets. Um, and the way that, that will have to get rolled out is there has to be a cutoff date um of interested folks, so that we can go out and make that purchase.
It's easy, because you're going to do it before school is out.
And I, and I do want to know, and I know I didn't turn on my light on, 500 tickets for approximately $13 would be about 6,500. So these are great ways to show. So these are great ways to show, you know, how, you know, when people come to ask for sponsorship, you know, we look at what is really benefiting. This is, this is a great example. Five hundred tickets, thirteen dollars each for sixty five hundred.
All right, so let's vote.
Mr. Byes, Ms. Grande?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on the other page still.
There it is. Okay, sorry.
Motion passes, and I think we can bring back Dr. Wyatt. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. He said nine point one, nine point two only. Yep. Bless you. Alrighty, so moving on to nine point three, Making Hope Happen Foundation's Annual Gala or Gala, May eighth, twenty twenty five. And this was brought by both Dr. Wyatt and Superintendent Ariano. So Superintendent is not here, so I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam President, and I wish Superintendent Ariano was here because I think the last two were me as well, so. Now, this is something that, you know, I had talked about with some folks in the community as well as the foundation. And, you know, my question is, are we always supporting this particular gala? Reason being because this is specific to our students. I know it's a foundation that wants to create scholarships to eventually where none of our students have to pay for college. And I thought that was a, when I first came on the board, what guy with a huge idea and and task to attack and and I don't know exactly where we're at. I believe we might be in the tens of millions of dollars now. I don't know if that's correct. I wish I had somebody here to give me the specific information. And I was with Ms. Detman and she talked to me about it and my compliments to the foundation for raising that kind of money. I know we want to create an endowment to one day where kids in San Bernardino never have to pay for college, just have to have the desire to want to go. So my ask is that we support it in whatever amount, you know, usually we, I think, reserve at least one or two tables. And that would be my ask is consistent with what we've done in the past and to continue to support the foundation. Thank you. I I'll be honest, I don't know what they are. Let me take a look. Do we have a flyer?
I have a question too.
Yes, Ms.
Oh, sorry.
So if you're done, Dr. Wyatt, I'm gonna go ahead and.
I am. I think Mr. Tillman had a.
Ms. Medina?
I guess a question would be how much have we, I know we've had contributed as well, so I'm just curious. So we can be consistent, what was the amounts that we've had, you know, given in the past? I don't know.
I think five thousand dollars is reasonable.
Five thousand, is that what you think? Okay.
Yes, we did five thousand last year.
Okay, and then we can do that. I can motion that. I can second it. I'm making the motion for five thousand. Or were you thinking of a second? Or were you thinking of?
Second it.
We have a motion by Ms. Medina and a second by Mr. Tillman for five thousand dollars. I do have a question, though, just really briefly. When you talk about, I think you mentioned, are they currently providing scholarships to students? Okay, okay, okay. And and when organizations that we support in this manner provide scholarships to students, do we know what their criteria is in in awarding such scholarships? Do we, you know, do we have any?
Madam President, I don't know the criteria specifically, but I do know there is one. I believe one of them was definitely for kids that could not afford to go to college, you know, which unfortunately for our city, those are kids on pretty reduced lunch. So that would apply to many of them. That's why I think the intent and the goal was to be able to provide for every student that wants to go to college, so. But at this point, I know we're awarding scholarships, which is great, but there is, I believe, a criteria and I think we should have that and be able to state it as well.
So so I think, you know, that's something that I would be interested in in getting a little bit more information specifically. And and maybe even having some information, them providing us some information, not just them, but other organizations as well in terms of how many scholarships have they awarded, who have been the recipients, like, you know, over the years and so forth. If we're gonna continue to support some of these organizations as we've been year after year. Ms. Alexander?
I mean, I can understand the logic behind that, but if we start asking for the criteria, I think we're gonna have to ask for the criteria for everybody that we're sponsoring because most of the organizations that we're sponsoring are, they have some type of outreach. So I think it goes back to policy and I don't know if we necessarily, I I don't know. I mean, we have to decide on what kind of impact we're trying to make as well. So I don't know if we necessarily want to get into the specifics or maybe create the stickiness and ask them just to come back and share with us what they did, but not make it a criteria.
I I'm not, I'm not suggesting to make it a criteria, but I am interested in knowing what their criteria is. You know, just as an annual reporter, I think that's actually even a wonderful idea because I think that to some degree, there there is, it's accountability, right? To to their their whole, the community holds us accountable, we hold community accountable in return. So I think I would like that for for the future. And I and I think I also would agree with Ms. Medina's comment regarding, you know, more structured. And and again, it goes back to the board, right? If we're not seeing that, we don't have to vote one way or or another. And I think moving forward, me personally, I might just change that if if those requirements, that the things that I want to see are not being provided or presented by the specific board member that's bringing it up. Mr. Tillman?
The major criteria is ensuring that they're providing the scholarship and the resources to San Bernardino City Unified School District students. Because we have students that are on the entire spectrum, whatever spectrum we're talking about. And there's a lot of different organizations that target different students for different reasons. But the key is to make sure that the resources are being directed at San Bernardino City Unified School District students.
Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. I do appreciate my colleagues' comments as well. And, you know, sometime you ask and you shall receive. And so I just got a little blurb here real quickly. Last year, there were a hundred and twenty five scholarships awarded and get this, an amount of nearly five hundred thousand dollars. So, I mean, if we're looking at, actually, four hundred fifty thousand in twenty twenty three and then mentor for students for two years in addition to that. I would like to, almost all of those are our students. I hope like heck they are. If they're not, then we'll find out. But, I mean, I'll I'll be honest with you, I didn't know it was at a half million now. That that to me is just unbelievable when we talk about what's happening in our city and the impact that we have on our city and and such a foundation. And I remember when I first got on the board ten years ago, and I thought, God, what a lofty challenge this was. Dr. Marsen saying that he wanted it to be a one billion dollar foundation. And I kind of chuckled. I was like, God, that's a huge number. But, you know, and if we keep thinking with that mindset, we'll get to that point. I mean, five hundred thousand is nothing to laugh at. I mean, it's incredible and, you know, we're we're well on our way to getting to become a foundation like that. And so for me, you know, I'll be honest, five thousand is great. Now that I've thought about it, even ask to amend that motion because I would say ten thousand, but I'll take anything that we can get for the foundation. I'll just say that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we do have the motion and the second, so let's vote. Ms. Alexander? Oh. Tillman? Motion passed. Ms. Alexander?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but today, as I mentioned, there was a letter that was sent to your attention regarding Links Incorporated. We've, we have historically sponsored the links, so I would say for the past five years for the Scholarship Breakfast. So I'd like to agendize it for next meeting. The sponsorship we did last year was at five thousand. Make sure that the information is available to everybody so they can review it. However, we have, it's been noted that's two students from San Bernardino City Unified School District that will be receiving scholarships that are two scholarship recipients. One is from Cajon. I believe the other one is San Bernardino High School, but I'll have to go back and look again. But I just want to make sure that we agendize it, but I want to get my colleagues' approval. Can we agendize this for next meeting?
We got consensus.
Yeah, the letter was sent to.
To you.
Myra and Karen.
So Karen is making note of that and we will add it to the next agenda.
Yeah, everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
I'm not seeing heads.
You have consensus.
Okay, cool. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Act, ten point oh, action items, ten point one, personnel report.
As as presented, moved again.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. And for ten point oh, our student board member votes as well, right? So Mr. Avila?
Hi.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I clicked and moved on. It was approved.
No worries. Great, motion passed. Eleven point oh, consent items, eleven point one, approval of consent list. Do we have any to pull?
Moved.
Second. Okay, thank you. Do we have any to pull? Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to pull eleven point one seven. I'm an employee of San Antonio County Schools and there is a monetary value to it of four hundred fifty dollars, so I will be abstaining on that vote.
Thank you so much. So we have a motion by Mr. Tillman and a second by Ms. Felicia Alexander? No. By Ms. Medina, thank you. And we will vote on the remaining items.
And I'm sorry, I was changing the vote. Who motioned and seconded?
It was Mr. Tillman motion and then a Ms. Medina second. And then we're pulling eleven point seventeen.
Dr. Wyatt, did you mean to abstain on this?
Yes, Karen, I thought I pressed abstention.
This is for all the consent items.
He's, he can vote on this. You just, the one item we're gonna vote on next.
Yeah, but you put abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that was a mistake. Yeah, that's a yes. My apologies.
I'm gonna correct his later because every time I click on yea, it goes back to abstain for some reason.
Okay, no worries. Thank you. Motion passed. All right, now we're going to go ahead and vote on that eleven point seventeen. Second, moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Mr. Avila?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carries. Twelve point oh, report comments by union organizations, twelve point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
No report.
Twelve point two, California School Employees Association.
No report.
Twelve point three, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
Twelve point four, San Bernardino School Police.
No report.
Thank you. Thirteen point oh, reports and comments. Thirteen point one, board members. And I'm gonna go ahead and start on my left with Mr. Santos.
Nothing today.
Thank you, Ms. Grande.
Oh, thank you. Couple of things I want to just say thank you to Anderson for once again having those wonderful Anderson Olympics held at Indian Springs. And I have many, many dear friends there that I love very much my experiences there, my many, many lessons and caring about all students and all means all. And shout out to Lisa Noe Admin is doing a great job, Dr. Ryan Rubio and Jackie Willis. And the hardest workers, working staff I've ever met, Cindy Shimmin, Tamika, Larry, Lori, the Lori Quarry, Lori Shook, Brian Petrosik, Morgan Felden, Lauren Martin, Kari Nelson and so many, many more. But also my biggest heart to Nurse Latanya Maxie Reeves, you know who you are. And I also want to shout out to all the classified staff, mod severe special ed. Their their jobs are so, so very hard. They never stop working. They take risks all the time, getting hurt, chasing children over a hundred pounds and getting hurt and still getting up more on that. Also, I do want to mention something real interesting. I just learned today at Rotary Club, our own Tatiana Eden Ochoa. She is number one or number two top one thousand students nationwide in speech and debate. She's going into the finals. They're held in Kansas in May sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. She is a great kid, but I hear she's over involved. I don't think she thinks of it that way. But she works for Uplift. She's our student board member, student advisory for Joe Baca, speech and debate. And so she's amazing. So shout out to her and good luck to her and and much, much love. That's it for me.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes, I want to thank and commend the principals of Highland Pacific and Fairfax. They had a event there. They co-sponsored with, I think, The Rock put it on, The Rock Church. And they had In-N-Out that came out and they gave new shoes to students at both schools and food and games. It was just a great environment, super environment. And then I want to compete, commend our staff that take care of all the grounds at our sites. I was at a retirement party for Mr. Ann Alexander. Just happened to be sitting next to a gentleman who's from the area and he said he works in San Bernardino a lot. He's a developer, but he would, he commended me on how well our schools look. And I told him that it was intentional and that our employees do a great job at it. And he went on and on about all the different sites that he sees in the district and how well they're kept and that the schools in San Bernardino are really the gem of the city of San Bernardino. So, Terry, to you and all your employees, make sure you tell them that they're being noticed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. And there's always lots of celebration to be given here in our city and just always proud of the work we do. And I want to start off with two of our folks here. And I think all of us have seen this and we've heard it many, many times over the last couple of weeks, but just want to congratulate Assistant Superintendent Anna Applegate again for her recognition by Cabe for Administration of the Year at the state level. So amazing achievement. Congratulations, Ms. Applegate. And then, of course, my colleague to the right of me over here, Mr. Tillman, Board Member Tillman. I see he got recognized for the Trailblazer Award and that was at our, what, annual scholarship program for the social lives. I think he's always used to getting recognized, but I want to make sure he gets recognized by us as well. Good job, Mr. Tillman. And then our Royal Valley High School art program. And then our Royal Valley High School art program, you know, we, we see a lot of their art that's been highlighted. Again, our Making Hope Happen Gala, I always try to go. I won't be able to go this year, darn it, because I like bidding on their items. They always have amazing artwork there and just taking that home with us. But four of our students from Royal Valley High School are recognized at the national level for artwork. And again, you know, you hear me say this all the time, and I know we agree on it as a board here, is that, you know, our students, they, they compete at the highest level. They really do. And here they are again, competing at a national level in art and our visual performing arts. And I just think, gosh darn, you know, we continue to make our mark in this country on a national level. And the support that we provide here on the board, and when we prioritize things, things happen. I know they do, and so thank you to our board as well as all our employees and Mr. Keith Baraki over there for the amazing job he does, as well as our other stu, and art instructors as well. I know he doesn't do it alone. There's a lot of people that help, but great job to our students again. Then I, we talked about Symphony earlier. I know I wasn't in the room, but was able to participate in that gala as well. And Hardy Brown, too, roped me in to be the co- MC for their auction we had. And so we raised a lot of money at that event. Again, that comes back to our students right here in our city. They highlighted so many different students and programs on their videos and had some of our students there as well to perform and just, again, continue to impress me and blow me away. And then lastly, I know some of you were at the Caesar Chavez Breakfast this past weekend. Some of you were there earlier. I got there later, so I'm sorry if I missed some of you, but got to stay for the entire event. And again, what a great event that was right here at Cal State San Bernardino. And, you know, I love our partnership with them, and I was able to talk with Dr. Enrique Marillo as well. And one thing I didn't notice is that we didn't sponsor that program. So I know we're always asked for sponsorships. That one I would ask us to look at next year when it comes up, because it, it's quite a, an event, a long event, but, no, not lead. This is different. This is the Caesar Chavez Breakfast, honorary breakfast in recognition of him. A lot of recognitions there. They also gave it the Lifetime Achievement Award. They go Pepe. I can't think of Pepe's last name off the top of my head. It'd make you want to help me with that, but that was really cool to watch as well and just his marketing's left on, on our area and Latinos in, you know, in Hollywood. But again, I, I saw their districts that are in our area that helped sponsor that program. We're not one of them, and I know we don't mind being one of those. We want to be one of those. And it's right in our backyard at Cal State San Bernardino. And again, amazing, amazing event, so. Those are my comments. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. And I'm actually glad that you mentioned it, you know, maybe looking at, and I know this is probably gonna add more, more work, but looking at, do we have like even an Excel or some type of sheet where we're, what we're donating, which we're contributing? So that way, we don't forget some of the ones that we have in, in these matters that, like, for instance, the example of Sessa Chavez. I know we try to be mindful of, of supporting organization that are, you know, are supporting our diverse communities. And so maybe that might be something that we could see or, but I know, again, it's gonna add more, but I think just adding as we're going along which ones we've done and which years, so. I'll pass it on. Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
I would like to also say congratulations to Assistant Superintendent Anna Applegate on your award. What an amazing accomplishment. So congratulations. And want to say thank you to Dr. Funches, to your staff, just coming out, giving a great presentation and overview of what you're doing with just our overall human resources, both unclassified and not classified. Appreciate all that. Couple of things. So I did miss the last meeting. So this happened last month, the NJROTC Arroyo Valley High School. They had their twenty-third annual military ball. Didn't even know anything about it until I walked in. I was like, oh, this is really amazing. They didn't know Myra, because I think Myra attended the year before, and her sister, actually, I think was the, she was over it that year, right? So it was an amazing event. I just would like to encourage us if we could kind of uplift them and attend that next year, be their twenty-fourth annual. Also, congratulations to Mr. Tillman on his Trailblazer Award. Very well deserved. He received it for thirty years of service, which is not an easy feat, and just all the impact that you're doing in the community. So thank you and keep up the great work. Also, I wanted to say thank you to the students from Vermont Elementary that, I participate in Read Across America. I think some of us did that at different schools, but I was so touched when I came back and I had cards from the students. So I just wanted to say thank you. I'm gonna call them out. So thank you to Niva, Angel, Dara Lee, and Myliss Master for your, your thank you cards. It's really touching. I really appreciate it and look forward to next year. And that's it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And did you forget something, Ms. Grande?
Yeah, I need to say something.
Oh, did I miss you?
No, you didn't. I started with.
Oh, okay. Ms. Grande?
I'm sorry, just a second to clarify. So what you're saying is that we did not attend the Caesar Chavez Breakfast? I mean, we didn't. Okay, because I remember going to it in the past. So we did sponsor or we didn't sponsor? Okay, so we didn't sponsor, but I recall, I, I, I remember going. I, I know now that I must have bought my own ticket, because I, I knew a lot of people there, so I used to always buy a ticket, but I had confused it. So we, we don't normally buy a ticket there, and we're gonna think about doing it next year? Is that what we ended with?
I'm gonna allow Dr. Wyatt to answer that for you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande, and I need to be corrected as well. So we did support, let me say that, the breakfast, because those of us did attend, we did purchase tickets to go. So I want to make sure that I, I correct myself on that. But I, I would just like to see us support the program at a larger level, a sponsorship level. I mean, I'll be honest, I looked at some of the sponsorships up there, and what we've been sponsoring programs as of recent, we would have been the top sponsor that day. So obviously, we have a huge partnership with Cal State San Bernardino. We have a very strong and rich Latino Hispanic history here in our city. You know, I was going over some numbers with Dr. Funches, you know, I, I was in the room recusing myself, and we're like at eighty-three percent now Hispanic students in San Diego City. So, I mean, you know, there's, there's a tremendous investment in our community here. And like I said, amazing luncheon. It's Pepe Serna. Thank you, Ms. Marong Guin, for giving me that little tidbit of information. I apologize to him for forgetting his name, but he was the first person to ever receive that Lifetime Achievement Award at that breakfast. And wow, what a recognition. It, it was absolutely amazing. Very emotional to, to be there. It was just a great event, so. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you so much, and I'll make mine brief as well. I also want to congratulate Assistant Superintendent Applegate for her recognition. I was really bummed to not be able to be out there, but, so, you know, you, you, you do what you do. But we got a lot of pictures. We got a lot of photos, and so congratulations. And to the, really to the whole district as well, the multilingual department, and as well as Mr. Tillman for your recognition as well. I think that I might have had something, and now I can't remember what it was, but. Alrighty, well, that's, I guess that's my portion of my comments then. I swore I had something. All right, fifteen point, no, fourteen point O? No, thirteen point two. But he's, Superintendent Ariano is not here today. He is on vacation with his family, so he, we're doing great. We're doing great, if you're watching.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. Oh, I, I remember. I wanted to mention, Ms., Dr. Wyatt is here sitting to my right. If you guys are all wondering, he's not replacing Superintendent Ariano. I, I asked him if he can sit next to me, because I still have some questions sometimes that I rely on Superintendent Ariano for. And I was like, do you mind sitting next to me so you can help me out? And the moment that I needed his help, he wasn't here, so I reached all the way over to Mr. Tillman. So, gee, thank you, in case you were wondering, in case you were wondering. So moving on to fourteen point O summary of board members' requests, fourteen point one review of requests.
Okay, that would be me. Good evening. I only have one, so if I missed anybody, just tell me after. I've got Ms. Rosales Medina. She asked for a list of who we have sponsored over the past few years. And that's it.
And it's more of a list that is like, it's a, it's a working list. It'll be adjusted every.
Yeah, I'm currently, I've been doing it for the past two years, but I never did before that. So between me and business services, maybe we can get a more extensive list.
If, if I may add, if you can get up to five years, in the last five years, and then the amount, that would be great. And I think somebody else had another one on there, a request. Okay, fifteen point O meeting adjournment.
Well, so moved. Second.
Awesome. Meeting adjourned.